All right, will the clerk please call the roll?
Wallace.
Here.
Hannaford.
Here.
Sherman. Benson. Stelling.
Here.
Hamilton, here. Eckhart.
Here.
Winters.
All right, item four is discussion and action on consent agenda. All of the following items which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at city council meetings will be approved by one vote of the council. Any member of the council desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting on October 16th, 2017, and item B, approval of claims in the amount of $233,638.69, and payroll expenses of $313,207.12. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Chris Eckhart, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Item six, reports from boards and officers. A is Alva Hospital Board Special Meeting on October 24th, 2017. Dr. Hannaford, do you have anything to share?
We had some general, routine matters with the financial reports and credentialing of four doctors, our copy report. Majority of the meeting was some policy reviews from lab, HIPAA, environmental, infection control, and these were all done to help with, we talked about the critical access that the hospital will be going for, and then heard from reports from the Commisses Home, Homesteads, San Anthony's, et cetera.
Does the council have any questions for Dr. Hannaford? Thank you, Beau. Item B is Alva Public Library Board Meeting on October 17th, 2017. Mr. Eckhart, you have a report.
Pretty short meeting, pretty routine. The director had mentioned that we did have a large number of donated DVDs, so added a lot to their collections. It's become a really popular designation, destination for a lot of families and then kids and things like that. They held 28 meetings in the library in the month of September, and they have several more scheduled for October and November. They have some repairs they're working on right now. Their main focus is to get their two water fountains replaced because they don't, they're having a hard time finding the parts to replace the ones that are there now. They are participating in what's called Images of Oklahoma Project. They're one of 10 libraries or museums in state. They're going to work together to share resources, images of Oklahoma-Alva from the past, and kind of looking at photos that they want to share, having some people bring those in, et cetera, and that was pretty much it.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Eckhart? Thank you very much. Item C is the Alva Recreation Authority Meeting on November 15th, 2017. Joe Don, can you report on Brandon's behalf?
Yeah, that was a pretty routine meeting all the way around. What, they went through their normal business of minutes and claim, minutes and financials, and the director's report, the, and then there was a short up giving over the shade structures, and that was the length, about the length of the meeting.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Item D is the Alva Arena Authority Meeting on November 7th, 2017. The minutes and agenda are in the council packet for you. I do, I'll point out that they are continuing to, or they're stating their minutes that they are seeking out a design consultant for contract basis on, from an existing community facility somewhere. They are also looking at funding mechanisms, and there hasn't been any new information on the location. The location committee has no new report, and they have, they've continued to work with their own design committee for making recommendations to the designer, the complex I do believe that at the time they met, Woods County had not yet met to approve the addition of, Woods County is a co-beneficiary on the trust indenture, but I believe since then they have met, and that is the case, they have approved that, so. There, I'm not sure I could answer any, but if there are any questions, we can pass them along to our representative on that, Arena Authority. Thank you. Next item is Tourism Tax Meeting on November 15th, 2017. Joe Don, can you report for Bryce?
Yes, I can make a report here. They went, the first part of the meeting was routine, it's just financials and minutes. There was a, a funding request for, from the City of Alva from, in the Chamber of Commerce to host the, to get funding to help host the Oklahoma Municipal League Community Leadership Development Class. This is the second year that we have hosted this class in Alva, and the amount requested was $2,150, and that was approved. The Fire Department to the City of Alva requested $15,000 to finish, make the improvements to their training facility out by Hatfield Park, and that was approved. There was $15,000 requested by the Southwest Country Fest to bring a concert to Alva. The final amount that was approved was $5,000, and then there was no other business, there was, meeting was adjourned.
Council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Next item is the Alva Airport Commission Meeting on November 13th, 2017. Pretty routine meeting. We discussed and did approve new signs for the airport that are consistent with the signs that have gone up as part of the wayfinding project from the Culture Enterprise District, the big brown signs with the nice poles. The board did approve to, to proceed and get two of those out on the highway to signify where the terminal is. We did also approve, the airport is required to have a capital improvement plan in place for five years, four, five, five years?
Five years.
Five years out, and so we approved that through 2023. The items on the plan are dealing with largely with taxiway.
Taxiway.
And apron changes.
Changes and reconstruction.
And that's, that's part of the requirements that we have in order to participate in FAA funding mechanisms that they have for us, so. That plan was approved, it, while the plan was approved, it's, all of it's subject to, you know, future budgets and, and board approval, that sort of thing, so. We will be looking to fill the vacant position for Corey Washington after his passing, and it'd be some big shoes to fill. Corey was great for that board, he was great for our community, he was just a good guy, so we'll, possibly by the next council meeting, have someone from the council to approve to take that vacant position. And then that concludes the airport meeting report.
Kelly, it sounds like there's a lot of things getting ready to go on out there with this coming summer that they announced at the breakfast the other day.
Mm-hmm. The, they're doing it, and I, I reported on this, gosh, a few months ago, but there, there's a race that goes from somewhere in Texas to.
Sweetwater, Texas to.
Somewhere up northeast.
In Maine, I think.
Yeah. But Alva is the first stop, and it's, it's a race, it's all women pilots, they're going to, the race is going to have their first stop in Alva, and then the, the business community out at the airport is going to work together to put on a, some sort of a air festival during that period of time, so it should be a really great deal come June. Happy to try and answer any other questions you guys might have. The Water Sewer Committee Meeting. Is Dana, you on that?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay, I was thinking of Brian.
It's Randy.
Randy already bowed out. Well, bring the notes and let Daniel go on. Randy, Joe Don, or Daniel?
We're going to address most, it was, the meeting dealt with both the water storage tank and the REIT grant, which we're going to discuss later on. We can discuss each one of those items a little bit later on in length.
AUA meeting?
At the, well, one in the city, one in the AUA.
Right, okay. Did you two like to add anything?
No, if we're going to touch those, that's basically everything that was covered, so.
Item X is Finance Committee Meeting today. There was not a quorum, so there was not a finance committee meeting today. Dr. Hannaford, do you have anything you'd like to add to that? Okay. As far as my report is concerned, I was at the middle school last week to address the eighth graders about the If I Were Mayor essay contest, that is sponsored by the Oklahoma Municipal League every year. I don't, we haven't done this since I've been mayor, and I don't know if we did it before I was mayor.
Not really promoted as heavily.
But we had about, I had about 20 minutes with the eighth graders down there to encourage them to think about things that they could do to help others out in our community, and then go ahead and write that essay, so. It is sponsored by the Oklahoma Municipal League, it's got a $250 first prize, so, you know, it might be something that, I'm anxious to see what they come up with, so I hope that OML will share our, our students' essays with us, and we might find our way into a strategic plan or something.
We might figure out a way to get some of that information.
Is it designated just for the eighth graders?
It's just the eighth graders, eighth graders, it's across the state. Winter will be recognized on, is either the House or the State.
I think it's the House.
Senate floor during Municipal Week.
Quickly, I think, Joe Don, you're probably going to cover the District 11 position with the, okay, so I'll save that for you. The, Joe Don mentioned during the tourism report that funding for the Oklahoma Municipal League's leadership class, and they'll be here, let's see, the seventh and eighth, so they'll stay the night, and I'll get to address them on Friday morning before they start into all their training. And then, if you, if you Facebook, you might check it out, there was a, a good article that I shared, it, I'm not sure who wrote it, it was only a first name, I think it said Ashley was the author, but it was, there's lots of stuff to do in this tiny town, talking about things to do in Alva, and particularly arts and culture and that sort of stuff, so you might check that out. And then remind everybody that the Christmas parade downtown will be next Saturday, or the Saturday after Thanksgiving, so, this Saturday.
It's coming Saturday.
It's coming Saturday.
It's this coming Saturday. That's not the second.
No, that's going to be the Saturday after, that's next Saturday. The week from.
Week from Saturday.
The week from Saturday.
It's the second. I know it's the second, so.
The week from, yes, a week from this Saturday.
So come downtown and enjoy that, and I know the, a lot of people put a lot of time into that.
The movie.
They're going to show the, the Waving Week trilogy at the Ralto that afternoon, and I'll also go ahead and, you know, give a little bit of credit to, a lot of credit to Lance Hardman and Kelly Schrock for the work they put in downtown getting all the lights, you know, around on the Courthouse Square and all that, and I know they have some help, but those are, those two are the, the ringleaders for all the Christmas lights on the square, so they've been doing that for several years now, and they do a great job. That'll conclude my report unless anybody has any questions. All right. Joe Don, City Business Manager's report.
Over the past few weeks, I've been talking with Bank Central. They had turned in a, some business, some building plans that showed them reconstructing half the street, of Sixth Street from Flynn to Choctaw, and I'd been talking with them about us going in with, the city going in and trying to help them out, re, to reconstruct that, and would do the whole street, but the cost estimates that came back were, for that project, I felt were just too high for the City of Alva at this time. We will have to go back in, to my knowledge, the bank is still going to try to reconstruct half the street, and we will have to go back in at some time and address the other half, but it just won't be able to do it, we just, with the funding we have, we can't really swing that at this time, but it will be something we will have to address, and may even be moved up in our, on our priority list a little bit so that we get it addressed pretty quickly so that the, so that that street looks cohesive when it's done. We have, we are still working forward on the upper payment limit supplemental payment program with the hospital and the nursing homes. We are working through a few issues. The, the, there is supposedly a new application that is being filed with the, from CMS, with CMS from the state, and once that gets approved, we'll be looking to hopefully contract these nursing homes to help get them some funding. Our Water Resources Board Loan, which was originally slated for November 1st to be approved at OW, at the Oklahoma Water Resources Board Meeting, it was pulled off of that meeting because the, the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality had not yet approved a construction permit, they, the lady that was working on the construction permit had been out for several weeks for one reason or another, and that didn't get approved, so they have postponed that until the December 19th meeting. Our, I'll touch on, just briefly here, well, I'll just wait, the next item I was going to discuss was REIT, but we'll discuss that a little bit long, a little bit more in detail at that agenda item, it's going to be addressed there. The, would like to remind the council members, if you haven't got your RSDP in for the Employee Service Awards Banquet, which will be held on December 1st, please get that to us, that'll be at the Moose this year. Catering will be, will be giving out service awards for all the employees. I did send out a email Friday to all the council members about a OML board opening for our district. The District 11 representative to the OML board had, board had to resign, and so they had put out a call for nominations. I felt that this would be a good, a good board for, for the City of Alva to have representation on, if we could get it, it all together. I do know that the mayor of Guyman is being considered, has got his nomination turned in, he had turned it in for, originally back when the board first met and appointed the representative from Gage, and if the mayor from Guyman is appointed as our, as our representative, he'll be a fine representative for us. He will, he will serve the district well. And mayor, that would be my report at this time.
And I'll, you know, echo Joe Don's sentiments. Kim Peterson is the mayor at Guyman, he's been a great help, mentor, if you will, for me as a mayor, and he's served in many capacities with OML over the years, and it would be nice if one of us had the, the time and, and desire to, to be on, in this district board seat, but I feel like if there isn't anybody that has that interest, Kim will do a good job, you know, representing the district. Joe Don, I wanted to maybe put a point of clarification also with regard to the, the street project at, on Sixth Street. We don't intend to, the expense that's estimated for the city to participate with the contractor that would be doing this would be close to $200,000 for that one block of street, so it's not that we don't want to participate in resurfacing or reconstructing that street, it's just that we are, we can do that more cost effectively using our own city crews to do so, so. It's, it really isn't a matter of, it is certainly not at this time, we're not going to participate with their contractor doing it at this time, but we are looking at, as Joe Don said, to use our crews to replace that street.
And then, and really, if we look at it the way it was explained, the hundred, nearly $200,000 was just our cost to do, just the cost to do half the street.
Half the street.
We would have had, I mean, we, that, it was just, we can do, we can do it cheaper than that.
So.
And do a quality job.
And we'll be working with the bank, Joe Don, is, we'll be working with the bank to make sure that they are aware of how we, how we can proceed within our own limitations, so. Does any of the other council members have any questions or remarks for Joe Don? Thank you, sir. Item seven, recognition and mayor's issuance of oath of office for Julie Dennis, EMS Director. Julie, would you please approach the council?
Very good.
How was that, Mary?
I can go further forward, that's easier.
I'll read the oath of office, you'll repeat after me, and this will all go smoothly, so. Do you would please raise your right hand? I, Julie M. Dennis.
I, Julie M. Dennis.
Having been duly appointed.
Having been duly appointed.
As the EMS Director of the City of Alva.
As the EMS Director of the City of Alva.
On my honor, I do solemnly swear.
On my honor, I do solemnly swear.
That I will never betray.
That I will never betray.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others accountable.
And others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always defend.
I will always defend.
Enforce, uphold, and obey. Enforce, uphold, and obey.
Enforce, uphold, and obey.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The state of Oklahoma.
The state of Oklahoma.
And ordinances of the City of Alva.
And ordinances of the City of Alva.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
That I will obey the lawful orders.
Of my superior officers.
Of my superior officers.
And the regulations.
And the regulations.
Of the Alva EMS Department.
Of the Alva EMS Department.
That I will protect the rights.
That I will protect the rights.
Lives and property.
Lives and property.
Of all citizens.
Of all citizens.
And uphold the honor of the profession.
And uphold the honor of the profession.
With my life if need be.
With my life if need be.
You are officially sworn in as the Director of the Alva EMS.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Julie's been with the department for quite some time, and I've had the great pleasure to serve with her on a number of disaster preparedness, you know, trainings and exercises and whatnot, and I'm excited for you, I think you're going to do a great job, and we're all happy to have you in this position.
Thank you.
Item eight is discussion and action on ordinance number 2017-004, setting fines and costs for certain traffic and criminal offenses within the City of Alva, Oklahoma, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, and declaring an emergency. Joe Don, I know that you and Chief Orkut are able to answer any questions, but is there anything you'd like to state prior to our consideration?
I'm just going to let Chief Orkut get up and speak about maybe the processes that he went through, and maybe talk about how he came, these were recommendations from his department, for him and the Assistant Chief, and if there's anything he wants to add on those, that process that he went through.
First of all, we kind of compared our fines and costs to some of the other cities that were like ours, same population, a college, that type of thing. The reason that this all came about was because of the change in the state law of felony crimes now becoming misdemeanors, where we felt like the city needed the ability to write citations for those misdemeanor crimes that were once felonies, and the prices that we had for them previously to this were, was not going to be enough of a punitive to, to keep people from wanting to do it again, so that's kind of why we raised that. And we took, I can't remember how many, I think there were probably 11 different towns that we looked at, and went from there, so if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Does the council have any questions? If there are no questions, thank you, Chief. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve ordinance number 2017-004.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Mary Hamilton, to approve ordinance number 2017-004, setting fines and costs for certain traffic and criminal offenses within the City of Alva, Oklahoma, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, and declaring an emergency. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
We didn't have a separate vote on the emergency clause. Is there a motion to declare this an emergency?
I move to declare emergency.
Have a motion by Randy Stelling, a second by Beau Hannaford, to declare an emergency for ordinance number 2017-004. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief, for your work and your department's work in revising all those rates, it's quite a list, so thank you. Number nine, the. Number nine, discussion and action on the resolution 2017-014, authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program for fiscal year 2017-2018. Mr. Dunham?
As we've talked on several different occasions about the O-MAG recognition program, this is the, one of the steps that is needed. Once we have everybody that has gone through the training for, taken, got their online training done, we'll be able to submit this to O-MAG and get reimbursed $6,000. That's when we come back to the city of Alva. The council has done, as a council, has completed the stability test, and they have also gone through the, the training required for the, during the adoption of the best practices, best practices manual. And right now, we are working on trying to get everybody through, through the online training. And like I say, this would just expedite the, this resolution's here to expedite it. Once that is complete, we can submit this to O-MAG. O-MAG will check our, check our documentation and be up and issue us a check.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham? Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
I make a motion to approve resolution 2017-014, authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program for FY 2018.
Second. Brian or Randy? Randy? Have a motion by Bo Hannaford, a second by Randy Stelling, to approve resolution number 2017-014, authorizing participation in the O-MAG recognition program for fiscal years 2017, 2018. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Item 10 is discussion and action on resolution number 2017-015, authorizing application for financial assistance from REIT funds in the amount of $39,620 for the purpose of video inspection of 23 water wells and acidizing and cleaning any that are detrimental, or determined, excuse me, any that are determined to be in poor condition. Mr. Dunham?
Well, over the past couple of years, we have applied for REIT funds to purchase Polycarts, which is a qualifying purchase under the program. But each year, we had looked, we've looked at substantial cuts in our request. The first year, we requested $40,000, and they granted 25. The second year, we looked, we said, well, if they're just going to grant us 25, we're just going to ask for 25, and they only gave us nine. And if REIT funding, if REIT would have been, if that funding level would have been cut at the legislator, legislation, they had already informed me that $9,000 was the first to get cut from being funded. During our meeting, our REIT meeting this year, we listened, and they outlined the priorities that funding would be, the priorities that funding would be addressed in. And to be honest with you, I didn't hear Polycarts in there very much, and they was way down the list, so I decided, what are the reasons we need to apply for funding for Polycarts? We turned around and looked at some of the higher, what would qualify as a higher priority, and that was water distribution system and the water, and water ride attainment, water well rehab. So we, I talked to Russell, what do we need to be doing to our water wells? What do we need to be doing down in our well field to make sure that we've got water coming to Alva? We've got 23 wells that are producing right now out of 48. We looked at, one of the options we looked at was rehabbing those other 25 wells to breach, to get them in production mode. But it was, but we decided that for the funds that we had available for REIT, could possibly have available for REIT, the best opportunity would be for us to rehab, to video inspect 23 wells that we have and make sure that they are operating at their optimal. And if they're any, that are determined to be in poor condition or not operate, not operating optimal level, we would acidize and clean them and get them up to work, and that we would have 23 wells that we knew were working at their optimum level. The REIT funding, the maximum REIT funding had been $50,000. That has been lowered to $40,000 for this year. The engineers' estimates for this project are $39,620. That is what we are applying for. We do expect that there would be, we do feel like there would be some, well, if there's more than one well that needs to be cleaned and acidized, that's going to cost about $12,000 per well. There is one well there that, there is one well cleaned in the grant, but anything above that one well would cost us 12,000 for each well that, above the one. I feel like this program, this project has a, meets the high, for us, REIT is a point project. I believe this project will get us the most amount of points for, to get fundability. I'd try to, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does the council have any questions for Mr. Dunham?
On this project.
Do we feel pretty good about, I mean, the anticipated cost is 12,000 per well? I mean, do we have an idea of, I mean, worst case scenario, what if we have five wells that need cleaned?
Well, we'll have to figure out how to, we'll have to figure out where the funding will, we've got some maintenance money that that 12,000 can come from. We've got some well rehab money there in our budget that'll be used there, and if it's above that, we'll have to figure...
Decide how many we want to do.
Figure out how many we want to do and get them in rotation and start getting them cleaned every year.
So we don't have to guarantee them that we're going to do all of that one time?
No, we wouldn't do, we would do all that we can find until they afford this year. And then we would have a plan to be working forward in the next, in the upcoming years as part of, that would be part of our five-year capital improvement plan that we talked about, that we passed at the last, two meetings ago.
If I'd looked at this correctly, it seems to me that the video inspection at $1,000 a well is really what we're, you know, that's going to give us our plan moving forward. And so that's, we can make assumptions right now, which ones need that, that this will determine that.
Yeah, and there's really no way to tell which ones are going to need the acidizing now. I mean, it could be one, could be none, could be one, could be all 23. We don't know at this time. And that's what the video would tell us.
I remember I wanted, these 23 are producing wells, but they may not be doing at their maximum.
Right.
They could be, so that's where the acidizing and stuff could come in, where it could out these wells. I mean, they're good wells, but just maybe not as good as they could be.
Right. These wells are currently in operation. They are currently producing water and sending water to Alva. This would just be to inspect the well, to make sure that they are working at their optimal level.
Joe Don, we will still continue to look to purchasing more Polycarts.
Yes, we will still, we will still keep that, that program will not go away. I feel like that's an important asset to our community. We may not be able to...
Do as much as we can.
Do as much as what we had thought about doing in the past, but we can come up with $9,000 to $10,000 a year to do it.
So are there, are those still available for people to purchase if they, I mean...
Well, they've never been available, the city of Alva ones have not been available to purchase. There's a comparable, if somebody, what I've told people, I'm not, I'm not encouraging them to do this, I'm encouraging them to wait, but if they've got to have one, there are some local, there are some local vendors that, and vendors around that have the same type of product that they can go purchase, and we will, you know, put it out, we'll pick them up. I bought, I bought one, and it cost about $100, if I remember right. But yeah, we'll still pick them up if they want, if they chose to use them. If they don't choose to use them, we're still going to pick up the trash. They're not going to have to go buy any, and we'll still be picking up trash. And when it gets around for their rotation, we will get them handed out. The first, the first round has pretty much all been handed out. There's only a few left down at the transfer state, at the public works right now. We will be looking to purchase the $9,000 worth here in the near future, and then we'll get those handed, those passed out in priority. We have identified the front, people that are...
Street pickup.
Street pickup right now is priority. Once the Polycarts are out to the street pickup, people that have street, curbside pickup, once they have been distributed there, we'll start systematically going through the alleys and replace.
They do look nice. I mean, they look a lot better than what has been up there.
So we're not doing away with that program, but we are moving funds towards this, towards our water well field. I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll motion to approve resolution number 2017-015, authorizing application for financial assistance from REIT funds in the amount of $39,620 for the purpose of video inspection of 23 water wells and acidizing and cleaning any that are determined to be in poor condition.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Randy Stelling, to approve resolution number 2017-015, authorizing application for financial assistance from REIT funds in the amount of $39,620 for the purpose of video inspection of 23 water wells and acidizing and cleaning any that are determined to be in poor condition. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Item 11, remarks and inquiries by citizens. Any citizens caring to make a comment? We'll allow you two minutes. If you'll please approach the podium and state who you are.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Let the record show that Dr. Peggy wished us all Happy Thanksgiving.
Call instructions.
Yeah.
Don't tell them, don't tell them.
Item 12 is remarks and inquiries by council members. Council members have anything? I'll echo Dr. Peggy's sentiments and wish everybody a Happy Thanksgiving. We'll see you back here.
I would like to say that, real quickly, as you know, Angelica is not here. She's been out, she's out of maternity leave. She had, she did have her baby Friday, little girl.
A free?
A free. She is six pounds, four or five ounces, and 19 and a half inches long.
I actually saw her yesterday at Walmart. She's doing, she looks tired. Angelica looked tired, but they were going home, so it's all good.
We'll be sure to congratulate her on our behalf. If there are no other remarks, inquiries, or business, we will adjourn the meeting of the Alva City Council and call to order the Alva Utility Authority meeting. Please call and roll.
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Benson? Sherman? Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AUA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the authority. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda. In place for discussion is the next item on the regular agenda. It will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October 16, 2017. Item B, approval of the minutes of the special meeting of November 2, 2017. And item C, approval of claims in the amount of $155,774.49 and payroll expenses of $82,991.59. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
No motion to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Bo Hannaford, to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Item five is discussion and action on resolution number 2017-016, a fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,070,751, reducing the Alva Utility Authority budget. Joe Don will probably go into this a little bit more detail, but essentially, in order to get the loan that we approved with the OWRB, we need to, we had already budgeted that water well project, or the water tower project in the Utility Authority. So we'll be moving that amount of money from the Alva Utility Authority main budget to a separate budget item for the loan with OWRB.
Yeah, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. The Water Resources Board requires that the loan funds be tracked in a separate fund, so thus, we are having to set up a separate fund for the construction of that water tower tank. So we are reducing the AUA budget by the amount that we had budgeted. And the next item will be increasing the, or funding the OWRB construction fund with the amount that we are receiving from the Oklahoma Water Resources Board.
Are there any questions from council members? All right. If there is, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this item.
Make a motion to approve resolution number 2017-016, a FY 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,070,751, reducing the AUA budget.
Have a motion by Bo Hannaford, a second by Daniel Winters, to approve resolution number 2017-016, fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,070,751, reducing the Alva Utility Authority budget. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Item six is discussion and action on resolution number 2017-017, fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,635,000, establishing fund for the Alva Utility Authority OWRB construction fund budget. Just as we presented on the last agenda item. Are there any questions on that?
Might state that the only reason, the reason for the difference in the dollar amount is that during the budget process, we didn't know what the final, final budget numbers were going to be, so we were estimating. And now we know what the final budget numbers are.
And that's the, that's the number we approved at our last council meeting.
Right.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll motion to approve resolution number 2017-017, a fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,635,000, establishing a fund for the Alva Utility Authority OWRB construction fund budget.
Second.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters, a second by Bo Hannaford, to approve resolution number 2017-017, fiscal year 2017, 2018 budget amendment in the amount of $2,635,000, establishing a fund for the AUA OWRB construction fund budget. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Item seven is discussion and action on awarding Young Street Tank Farm Construction to Wind Construction out of Oklahoma City as the lowest and best bid in the amount of two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars contingent on OWRB financing approval. Joe Don?
This is for Young Street Tank Farm, the bid, we had six bidders, prices ranged from two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to two million, nine hundred and twenty-six thousand, three hundred and fifty-six dollars. To kind of give you our, our basis on this, our engineers estimate, and these are for construction, these are construction figures only, the engineers estimated that our construction for the project would be two million, one hundred and thirty-one dollars, one hundred and thirty-one thousand, seventy dollars. So there was only, between the low bid and engineers' estimate, there's only about thirty-five thousand dollars, thirty-six thousand dollar difference. So we got pretty close. There were six, there were ten possible bidders at the mandatory pre-construction meeting, and then six actual bids were turned in. Wind, Wind Construction Company is a reputable, reputable company out of Oklahoma City that have done numerous projects very similar to what we are, we are proposing here, and they, they are, they met the qualifications through the bid process, and there's no reason why they wouldn't, we wouldn't recommend Wind as the lowest and best bidder. Especially if we look at the last agenda item, you see there is a little bit of a difference there in the dollar amount. Part of the things that we are, that we, that go through our budget and our funding and go through the loan will be the things like engineering, staking, permitting fees, bond counsel, finance advisory, and those fees, that's what makes up the bulk of the, the balance of what we are requesting from OWRB. There's also a two hundred and thirteen thousand dollar contingency, if I remember correctly, is part of this loan. So there may not be that, you know, hopefully, we don't have to suspend the contingency, and we're only borrowing two point four million dollars. See, the, the approval of financing, the OWRB would have approved our financing at their last, at their November meeting, had it not been for the permit, the construction permit from DEQ not being issued yet. So I have no, I have no worries about getting funding down December nineteenth, I will go to, or December, yeah, December nineteenth. I will go to the OWRB meeting on December nineteenth to represent the city of Alba at their, at that meeting and answer any questions that they may, that board may have. The, also in conjunction with this, this loan and this project, DEQ has asked for me to come down on a Monday sometime and visit with them, I'm still trying to get that, that scheduled. We should be able to handle that before the night, before our meeting on the eighteenth. So just that's kind of to give you an update on the entire project. We will, we expect, once all this goes through, we would expect construction to start in January. We are looking at what we can do to minimize the, the impact of the construction at, in that area of town that is a very busy area of town, especially at eight o'clock and at three-thirty or three o'clock in the afternoon with the school. Those are narrow streets, and we're going to talk about some pretty heavy-duty equipment. And we look, right now, we're contemplating having them ingress and egress off of Thunderbird. It may be a little bit out of their way, but it would certainly be a lot better than trying to navigate those narrow streets and everything. Have talked to the school about getting a school drop-off point somewhere in the back of the school instead of the front of the school to keep that traffic, to minimize that part of the traffic also. We are still working on a plan there. It will take approximately, well, the contract time is two hundred and ten days, so nearly a year for construction. While we, once we have the tanks demolished and the ground leveled and get ready to have the geotechnical work done that we need done before we start construction on the new tank, we will, we will suspend time, so there'll be about a thirty, thirty-day time period there that there won't be any construction going on, and it won't count against them on their days for construction to allow for soil testing to make sure that the, the ground will hold what we're wanting to put there. We don't have any reason to believe that it won't, it's done fine for the past eighty years, but it is a test that we need to go through, and it'll take about a month for those soil samples to be taken and test results getting sent back to us so we can start construction.
And there won't be any interruption in water?
There will be no interruption in water services. Right now, those tanks have water in them, but they are not in line, we are operating completely off of the one, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tank that's there right now. I don't expect any kind of water, I don't expect any issues at all or any, any interruption in service than what we've had so far. If there is anything that we've got to, where we address, where we'll have to address some temporary service outages, we will certainly try to let everybody know as soon in advance as possible, and we'll do that through the Blackboard Connect System.
On the elevation that the retaining wall that goes along there, will that stay in place, or will there be, it be lowered to street level?
I expect, I expect that retaining wall that's there to be modified some, because we, part of the project, DEQ requires us to fix the project, both once there and once it's complete for security purposes, and so we'll, we'll be constructing fits in that area also. So with the, with the new, with the old pressure pump that's there in service and everything and not taking that out of service, remember, we're going to take that out of service, but we are adding a new pump, we'll have to do something with that retaining wall to get that fixed up. Well, one thing I will, I probably do need to make a little bit of a comment on also is that we do not anticipate at this time anything other than just a white paint job on the exterior of this tank. Right now, our other tanks have some other painting on it to make them more aesthetically pleasing. We will look at that part of the project at a later date, if we want to do something like that. We're not going to, we haven't chosen anything other than white at this time.
It was mentioned it was fairly costly to add.
Yeah, it would be, it is going to be a little costly to add that, and we just need to address that separately anyway.
Well, I mean, this is, we knew this was going to be a huge project, we knew it wouldn't be without inconvenience at times, and even with all of that, it's something that our community needs, and I would entertain a motion therefore to approve this.
I'd make a motion to award Young Street Tank Farm Construction Project to Wind Construction out of Oklahoma City as the lowest, best bid in the amount of two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars contingent on OWRB financing approval.
Second.
Have a motion by Randy Stelling and a second by Mary Hamilton to award Young Street Tank Farm Construction to Wind Construction out of Oklahoma City as the lowest, best bid in the amount of two million, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars contingent on OWRB financing approval. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
All right. Then we will adjourn the Alba Utility Authority meeting, and we will open the Alba Economic Development Authority meeting. Will the clerk please call and roll?
Winters?
Here.
Eckhart?
Here.
Hamilton?
Here.
Stelling?
Here.
Benson?
Sherman?
Hannaford?
Here.
Wallace?
Here.
Item three is discussion and action on the consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature normally approved at AEDA meetings, will be approved by one vote of the board. Any trustee desiring to discuss an item on the consent agenda may request that it be removed from the consent agenda and placed for discussion as the next item on the regular agenda, it will then be considered separately. The consent agenda consists of the consideration and action on the following items. Item A, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of October sixteen, two thousand seventeen, and approval of claims in the amount of forty-four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents, and payroll expenses of seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and eighty-one cents. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll motion to approve the consent agenda. I'll second.
Have a motion by Daniel Winters and a second by Brian Wallace to approve the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Winters?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Eckhart?
Yes.
Hamilton?
Yes.
Stelling?
Yes.
Hannaford?
Yes.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned.